Good evening, and I'd like to call the order of the special meeting of the Board of Alderman for Monday, March 29, 2021. If everyone could please rise for the silent prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which means one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Alderman for knowledge. Alderman for knowledge.
I think he's here. Oh, Mike, you're on mute, that's why.
President. Mike, you got me?
Yes. Alderman Caballos.
Present.
Alderman Caballos. Alderman Tato. Alderman DiGio Vincarlo.
Here.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Hum- oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Hum.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
I'm here.
Alderman Markey.
Here.
Alderman Matthews. Alderman Matthews. Alderman Martinez-McCarthy. Alderman Martinez-McCarthy. Alderman Nujane.
Present. He's trying to get the credentials now to get in. I just got a text.
From Sandy.
I'm present.
Alderman Salbio.
Present.
Alderman Weaver.
Here.
Alderman Zimmerman.
Present.
Alderman Kornuski.
Here. Sandy, I think.
The thirteen present to absent.
There's Sandy now, okay. Okay, so the first item on the agenda, the whole reason for tonight's special meeting, is the mayor's budget presentation. So the mayor has today submitted his proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year to the city clerk. If you don't have a copy already, you'll be getting your copy shortly, but it is in today, so it starts the timeline running. And so the next item of action on the agenda would be the presentation. And at this point, I will turn it over to Mayor O'Leary and Sarah Geary for the presentation, and Mike LeBlanc as well.
So thank you, Mr. President. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So this is our 10th budget submitted, and we're very proud of this year. I want to first commend, of course, our budget team led by Sarah Geary, our finance department, Mike LeBlanc, Doreen Biolo from the Board of Education, and our CCOC committee, which is the Cost Containment Oversight Committee. I know we have new Alderman in the audience tonight, Alderman Markey. The Cost Containment Oversight Committee meets weekly on Wednesdays, and they go over the entire city budget, where we are each week of the fiscal year, department head requests, department heads report in as to how they're doing with their individual budgets, and we talk about challenges during the fiscal year and how to address them. This budget, as I'm sure you've heard, does not increase the mill rate. There'll be no property tax increase. There is a very, very small increase in the water rate, both on the quarterly service charge and the user fee, which for the average household will mean about $40 per year, $40 per year total combined increase. You know, we really have to start looking at our water infrastructure. I'm sure that you read in the paper from time to time about the water main breaks all over the city that occur. They're extraordinarily expensive to repair. The equipment, in many cases, that's in the ground, is over 100 years old. Come in my office, you'll see that there is an eight-inch water main piece of pipe, and also a valve in my office that is on a piece of furniture there. I keep that there. It's been there for the last six years to remind me that each year, we have to do something to do to increase the revenue in the Water Department. When Sarah gives her presentation, you will see the city of Waterbury is the lowest, the lowest in quarterly service charges and the lowest in user rate fees in the state of Connecticut. And that's why I think it's imperative, since there won't be a mill rate increase, for us to relook and reexamine our water rates, both on the quarterly service charges and the cost, the user rate cost. They're very, very small increases, as I mentioned. Other than that, I'm really proud of this team. I'm proud of all the work that's gone into this preparation. I'm proud of all of our department heads for working with Sarah Geary and, you know, identifying the areas that have to be met, and then getting creative and thinking out of the box for other areas that we just don't want to expend any taxpayer dollars right now, because we're getting, still working our way through this pandemic. People are suffering financially and emotionally, and the last thing we want to do is bring a property tax increase to them. However, having said that, we are fully funding all of our obligations, fully funding all of our obligations. Yet again, without a property tax increase, yet again, a budget that increases this next fiscal year over the current fiscal year less than 1%. So I'll turn it over to Sarah now and still give you the gritty details. And then, customarily, what we do is give you all an opportunity to examine the budget. Of course, we're available to answer your questions, either in person or virtually, and we look forward to the public hearing and a robust discussion that will follow. So thank you all very much. Appreciate your efforts. And here you go, Sarah.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'm happy to be here tonight with you to explain the mayor's proposed budget for fiscal year 2022. Mayor O'Leary used a Budget Development Committee once again to advise him during the budget process. I'd like to take this time to thank the mayor, as well as the other members of the committee, Mac to Mac, Dave Leopore, and Michael Blank, for all of their hard work and effort during this month-long budget development process. I'd also like to thank all of the department heads and their staffs for their hard work in submitting responsible budget requests. And a special thanks goes out to the photo stat unit of the Town Clerk's Office, as well as our IT Department for assistance with printing and distribution, website uploads, and presentation materials. Thank you to all. So once again, it was another challenging budget year. When the Budget Development Committee began its work, we had an $8.6 million gap between department expenditure requests and the projected revenues for fiscal year 2022. On this slide, you can see that if we fully funded all of the department requests for FY22, we'd have a budget of $429.8 million. This would have been an increase of about $8.6 million over our current fiscal year 21 adopted budget of $421.3 million. This would have been an increase of 2.04%. In an effort to contain the budget growth while still adequately funding the city's obligations and services, the Budget Development Committee cut $4.8 million from the requests, resulting in an increase of $3.75 million, or 0.89%. This next slide shows you the increases and decreases in the major categories of the budget. You can see that our contribution to the Education Department is staying the same in fiscal year 2022, as well as our debt service contribution and our contingency account. The general financial contribution to the Health Fund is decreasing by $2 million for a total contribution of $74 million in fiscal year 2022. The Education Department is expected to contribute $2 million more to the Health Fund in fiscal year 22. Their contribution will go from $6 million to $8 million to fund a portion of their employees' participation in the plan. So their increase offsets the decrease on the general financial side. The Internal Service Fund and Other Operating Charges category has an increase of about $1.9 million. This is mostly a budget contribution to the Capital Improvement Fund of $1.5 million in fiscal year 22. We do not have a general fund contribution budgeted in the current fiscal year. In some years, we've been able to fund contributions out of surplus funding, but we felt it was important to budget a contribution in the fiscal year 2022 general fund budget in order to fund the capital projects funded locally in the capital improvement plan. The Pension Area increases by a total of $576,000. The Public Safety Area increases by a total of $1.4 million. This is mostly due to contractual wage increase in the Police Department. There's a 2% general wage increase for the Police Union. The Fire Union's contract expires at the end of the current fiscal year, so there's no increase for the Fire Union budgeted at this time. In both departments, both Police and Fire, have grants, hiring grants that are expiring or have expired. So there was a loss of a few hundred thousand dollars worth of credits in these departments' budgets going into fiscal year 2022. The Public Works area of the budget increases by about $1.1 million. And again, here, the department has contractual salary increases for both the Blue Collar and the Enforcement Unions. And we're also seeing increases in the area of municipal solid waste, bulkie waste, and recycling disposal fees. So that's contributing to the increase of the Works Department as well. And then you could see all the other departments increase by about $778,000. And again, contractual salary increases factor into these departments as well. So that's how we arrived at the total increase of $3.75 million. This slide, again, as the mayor mentioned, we scrutinize expenses kind of constantly throughout the fiscal year. At budget development time, we scrutinize every expense that's requested by all of the departments. But our work doesn't end there at budget development time, or even when the budget goes into effect, the adopted budget on July 1. The CCOC continues to scrutinize expenses throughout the year, and we work with all of our department heads to control expenses throughout the year in an effort to end the fiscal year with positive results of operations. The next couple of slides have some of the major budget points. This is the sixth budget to contain two separate mill rates. You may remember that the state capped the motor vehicle mill rate going back six years. In this fiscal year 22 budget, our proposed real estate and personal property mill rate is 60.21. As the mayor mentioned, that's the same as the current year, and this is the sixth consecutive year with no mill rate increase on the real estate and personal property side. The proposed motor vehicle mill rate is 45 mills. That is the cap allowed by state law, and we expect to receive a motor vehicle grant in the amount of $7.7 million from the state to account for the lost local property tax revenue due to that cap. As Mayor O'Leary mentioned, we are proposing a small increase in the water consumption user rate. We're proposing an increase of 13 cents per 100 cubic feet. That's $2.52 to $2.65. And the fixed quarterly service charge is proposed to increase from $5 to $12 per quarter in fiscal year 2022. Also, we will be asking the board to consider approval of a four-year phase-in schedule of water user rate increases, which would cover fiscal year 22, the increases I just mentioned, as well as fiscal years 23 through 25. These increases will assist with funding the operations of the Water Department, as well as allowing us to invest in capital improvements in the water system, plant, and infrastructure. The sewer rate is staying the same as fiscal year 21. And on this slide, you'll see comparisons to other water departments and companies throughout the state of Connecticut. As the mayor mentioned, you could see we are the lowest. Currently, we are the lowest. With the proposed increase, we would still be the lowest. You can see that the average, or the annual cost for the typical household with our proposed increases would be about $302 per year. It's an increase of about $40 from the $262 that a typical household currently pays. You could see that the proposed increase is over $90 less than the next lowest rate of being Bristol Water, and it's hundreds of dollars less than some of the departments you see at the top of the list here. But again, these small increases are necessary to invest in the capital infrastructure, as well as run the department, the operations of the Water Department. Our Education Cost Sharing Grant, or ECS Grant, which is the largest form of state aid in the general fund budget, is expected to be the same as fiscal year 21. It's a total of $150.1 million. $113.6 million of that is general fund revenue, and the remaining $36.5 million is in the form of the Alliance Grant, which goes directly to the Board of Education. ECS Formula Phase-In was put on hold in the governor's proposed budget, mostly due to the fact that the Education Department will be receiving additional federal aid related to the COVID-19 pandemic. So next, we'll look at where does the revenue come from, the $425 million that makes up our budget. You can see on this pie chart that we are heavily reliant on two forms of revenue. That's property taxes at 60% and state aid at 34%. So those two forms of revenue combined make up 94% of our revenue structure. You can see that 1% is related to our use of fund balance of $3 million, and 1% is reimbursement from our enterprise funds, and then 4% is all of the revenue, including various charges and fees on the local level. This slide shows you how we calculate our budgets for current tax collections. The three factors of brand list, mill rate, and the collection rate are what provide the amounts that we can budget for current taxes. You'll see on this slide that we're budgeting $225.7 million for current taxes of real estate and personal property, and $21.1 million for current motor vehicle taxes. This next chart shows all of our non-tax revenue. It's budgeted at $168.1 million in fiscal year 22. That's an increase of the 3.75 million, or 2.28%. So you could see that all of the revenue increase is on the non-tax side. Our tax area is staying the same as fiscal year 21, and the increase is mostly related to state aid, which we'll see in the next few slides. The next couple of slides show you Exhibit G, which is our state aid schedule. It can be found on pages 69 and 70 of your budget books. The figures that we use on this page for the formula grants are those that were included in Governor Lamont's proposed biennial budget for fiscal years 2022 and 2023. You can see on this slide that all of our existing state grants are proposed to remain the same as FY21. There is a new state grant, which we are very grateful for. It's about $3.75 million that we're budgeting in the general fund. It was proposed by the governor as additional support for distressed municipalities. There is about $6 million more of this grant that we're budgeting outside of the general fund, and we plan to use it for COVID-19-related issues, as well as possibly capital projects. It is important to note that this grant is assumed to be a one-time revenue source, as it's only included in the governor's proposed budget for fiscal year 2022. It's not shown in fiscal year 2023. This next slide shows our reimbursement grants. These amounts are not published in the governor's proposed budget. We budget them based off of previous year receipts, as well as what we've received in the current year. You can see this area is decreasing by about $195,000. The grant that zeroed out, the Distressed Municipalities Industrial Incentive Program, is actually still being received by the city, but the state now requires that it be used for capital purposes. So that's why it's zeroed out here in the general fund. And the decrease in the Non-Public School and their Services Grant is based upon the current receipt in FY21. So this slide shows you that our general fund state aid is budgeted at $143.4 million in fiscal year 22, and that's an increase of nearly $3.6 million. The next couple of slides just contain some of the main points. On the revenue side, some of these we have already talked about. As I mentioned, we're heavily reliant on property taxes and state aid, which make up 94% of the budget. The grand list of October 1, 2020 has a net value of $4.44 billion. This budget does include a reserve computation for a decrease of 0.6% due to possible adjustments made by the Board of Assessment Appeals for real estate and personal property, and a decrease of 0.15% for motor vehicles. The tax collection rate continues to be budgeted at 96%, and at that 96%, 1 mill is equal to about $3.75 million. And as I mentioned, the state aid formula grant amounts included in this budget are based upon what we've seen proposed by the governor in his fiscal year 2022, 2023 biennial budget. As I mentioned previously, the general fund portion of our ECS Grant is staying the same at $113.6 million, and we also expect the Alliance Grant to remain the same at $36.5 million. The revenue derived from our current property tax line items, combined the real estate, personal property, and motor vehicles, amounts to $246.9 million. Our budget for delinquent prior year taxes is the same as the current year for a total of $3.8 million. The budget for the supplemental motor vehicle tax is increased by $150,000 for a total of $2.8 million. And the projections for interest on current and prior year's taxes are combined $375,000 more than the current year for just under $3.5 million. We do, again, budget for the potential use of fund balance in the amount of $3 million. This is less than the 1% of budget, as city policy allows, and has not been needed in prior years, and we don't expect that it will be needed in fiscal year 2022. So we've talked about where the $425 million comes from. Now we'll look at where the $425 million goes. This information on this chart is taken from Exhibit E in the budget book. It's pages 66 and 67. And these figures do include the allocation of benefits for the departments. And you could see here that over half of our budget is spent on education at 53%. Next is Public Safety at 17%, Retirement Board at 12%, our Operating Charges Section at 7%, Public Works at 6%, and all of their departments amount to 5% of the budget. This is a chart that we review each year, and it shows the impact of employee benefits, which is one of the largest sets of expenditures in our budget. You can see that expenses related to pension and health insurance total nearly $122.6 million in our general fund budget. The bottom chart shows that $87.6 million is related to liabilities that were previously incurred. That amounts to 23.38 mills, and in the absence of these payments, we could have expected a mill rate in the area of 36.83 mills. However, with that being said, we are fully committed to funding our obligations in order to keep the city on sound financial ground, and this budget does fund all of those obligations appropriately. The next few slides have some notes on the appropriations side of the budget. Again, it's a $425 million budget. Expenses increased by $3.75 million. The Budget Development Subcommittee came up with $4.8 million worth of expense reductions to arrive at that budget of $425 million. The budget, as I mentioned earlier, does contain a contingency account that's the same amount as the current year. That's $1.5 million. And this account is used to fund any unanticipated or emergency expenses that may come up during the fiscal year, as well as potential shortfalls in areas such as fuel, utilities, snow removal, and various other expense accounts. Funding for potential general wage increases that may be awarded in the outstanding labor contracts may also need to be funded by the contingency account. The white collar, fire union, and our supervisor contracts expire at the end of this current fiscal year, so they expire on June 30 of 2021. And if there are increases awarded, they would need to be funded by the contingency account, or possibly from expense savings within the department budgets. As I mentioned previously, the fiscal year 22 budget reduces the general financial contribution to the Health Fund by $2 million, but we are expecting the increase from the Education Department to make up for this decrease. We have been very successful in realizing savings from the Medicare enrollment project, and we continue to pursue other cost-saving measures in the area of healthcare as they come up. The Pension Plan, our annual required contribution, does increase by about $686,000, but the contribution for debt service on the outstanding pension obligation bonds decreases by $69,000. So we have a net increase in that area of $617,000. We do keep the contribution for debt service related to our capital projects the same as the current fiscal year at $22 million. And again, this allows us to continue a robust capital improvement plan each year. The Department of Education's funding from the general fund stays the same at $158.4 million. As I mentioned, we're expecting our ECS Grant to remain at the same level as well. And the amount of employee benefit costs the city pays on behalf of education is projected to be about $66 million in fiscal year 22. And as we saw on the previous chart, that included the benefits, the city spends about 53% of its general fund budget on behalf of education. Taking into account all these things we've talked about on both the revenue and expense side, that's how we came up with a balanced budget of $425 million. It's important to note that the Budget Development Committee has followed a number of funding policies that have been in place for a number of years now, and we think that that enables us to have a structurally sound budget. We've been committed to keeping the local property tax burden stable. As I mentioned, the real estate and personal property mill rate has been the same for now six consecutive years. We're committed to the renewal and replacement of the city's water and sewer systems infrastructure, and as we've discussed tonight, that does require a small increase in the water user rate and the quarterly service charge in order to continue investing in our water infrastructure. We continue to include funding for the local portion of the elderly tax credit, and this was first included in the budget back in fiscal year 15. We were continued our commitment to funding our contribution to the Education Department and working with the Education Department to make sure the educational needs of our city students are met. We have a commitment to responsibly fund the city's pension and other post-employment benefit obligations as well. The Internal Service Fund's contributions are funded at the appropriate levels in fiscal year 2022 in order to maintain the fiscal health of these funds. As I mentioned previously, we funded a contingency account in the amount of $1.5 million, which is necessary for different things that may come up during fiscal year 22, which starts on July 1 of 2021 and ends on June 30 of 2022. So we need to have funding available for things that may come up during that time that are unknown currently, right now, as we came up with the proposed budget. And this budget has a continued commitment to the controlled authorization of bond financing for selective capital projects, while we leverage state and federal grants whenever we can. And the new bonding for the general government departments is in the recommended amount of $7 million in fiscal year 2022. So something that we are extremely proud of is our slow budget growth over the last 10 years. Fiscal year Fiscal year 2022 is the mayor's 10th budget, and over those 10 budgets, there's been an average budget growth of about 1.15% per year. So we worked very hard to contain the budget growth, and it's something that we're proud Next, there's a few slides on our capital budget. You did receive the capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2022 through 2026. For the 2022 capital budget, there's $34.1 million worth of projects, and they're in a variety of areas, including streets, parks, schools, public safety, technology, as well as our water and sewer infrastructure, and a vehicle replacement program. These projects are funded by a variety of funding sources, including state grants, various local funding sources, and local bond authorizations. This slide shows the projects on the general government side that we will be seeking approval of bond authorizations for. They amount to $7 million. For the replacement of city pools, radio system upgrades, that's citywide, so this would impact our police and fire departments, as well as the public works department and others. That's a total of $2.5 million for that project, as well as a million dollars for the demolition of blighted properties to continue to improve the quality of life in our city's neighborhoods. There's also $3.45 million worth of water department projects that we are proposing to fund by bonding and bond authorizations would need to be approved for those projects as well. So in conclusion, the mayor's office and budget and finance departments will continue to closely monitor the current state legislative session, which is due to conclude on June 19. We'll work with the board to schedule department head budget discussion meetings, as well as the two public hearings that are required to be held for the charter, as well as the budget adoption meeting, which needs to happen by June 11, based upon the charter. I thank you for your time tonight, and we do look forward to working with you over the next couple of months in order to arrive at the fiscal year 2022 adopted budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, for a terrific presentation, as always. And we look forward to having a chance to look at this. As Sarah said, we'll be setting up shortly meetings with the department heads. I'll be reaching out to see who folks would like to talk to, and we can set those up and then meet among ourselves as, as necessary. As we've done it in past years, I think I've mentioned this before, we'll do this all as a committee of the whole, and that way, everyone who's interested, everyone can participate. Normally, everyone is interested in participating in the budget process. So the next item on the agenda for this evening, though, is to set that first required budget public hearing, and it's got to be set within one week, no less than one week, no more than two weeks from the time we get the budget from the mayor. So I would entertain a motion at this point that we set that hearing for next Monday, which is a regular meeting night of ours. It's April 5, and I would suggest that we set it at 6:00 PM. And then if it bleeds over into the regular meeting, we'll be here, and we'll be online anyway. So Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion with respect to setting the public hearing for April 5 at 6:00 PM?
So moved.
Alderman Lopez?
Second.
The motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing done, then a yes vote will be to approve the meeting on the 5th at 6:00 PM, and no vote will be to disapprove the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Regular meeting, the night of our...
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the public hearing will be next Monday, April 5 at 6:00 PM. It'll be a Zoom meeting, and so very shortly, the credentials will be sent to the alderman, and the, the call-in time will be set, I think, at 5:30, and the particulars for that will be available online through the city's clerk's office. Since this is a special meeting, there's nothing else that can come before this for this evening. So I want to thank you all for your time. Thank you, Mayor, and Sarah and Mike for your time this evening and for the very hard work and thorough job that you've done in putting this budget together. And I look forward to seeing all of you next Monday. Stay safe and take care of yourselves. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion adjourned.
Alderman Lopez?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, we're adjourned. Have a great week, everyone.
Have a great one.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, Waterbury.[1760.33]